All right, welcome everyone to our committee meeting for February 6, 2018. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Can we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We have discussion items tonight. We have the City Council Board, School Board Liaison. Ms. Donna Lake.
Good evening. It's nice to be back. I just spent an hour, hour and a half with Dr. Segal earlier today. We were at the Chamber Board meeting. She and I are both new members of the board. So there was a lot of discussion around our two topics. Just to let you know that, I appreciate her presence. Another thing I want to say, I appreciate, Dr. Segal did call me and tell me that you chose not to act on the extension for the Allison and Nora Baptist Christian project. Because one of the things that the developer wanted was to have the flexibility to make those apartments. And that's not something that counts in for you. Our final development plan were for condos. And apartment is totally different than a condo project. And so I appreciate the fact that you didn't even give a hint that that was even on the table. Certainly gives us some memories. So thank you for that. I wanted to start off with that. Just to let you know where we are, if you know, we're in fiscal emergency. We started out when we were declared in fiscal emergency.
The state auditor directed our auditor, Jim Stith, to pay all of our bills that we were trying to juggle. They wanted to know exactly what our position was. And so despite the fact that we normally are, just as you are, have restricted funds for different things, the state auditor wanted us to use those restricted funds to pay all of our bills so that they knew exactly what our position was. And it was somewhere around $2.1 million is what it ended up being. At the end of the year, we, there are a lot of things that we pay in December, so we were looking really good in November. But in December, there were three payrolls and we have other payments that are, one-time payments that are due in December. And so we ended the year about 1.3 million in the red. That includes some purchase orders that are carried over to next year. It was 1.1 million and then about 140 or 150, 160 in purchase orders. So we've made progress, substantial progress. That is due mostly to increased earnings taxes as well as cutting back on expenses. We know that there will be pent-up demands. We have to buy police cruisers and we, we did buy one new police, we had authorized for two police cruisers, but because the police chose that they wanted the Explorer, there was only money to buy one of those Explorers. We have purchased a new paramedic unit because that was critical. We needed to get that done. And also a new truck for Public Works who seems to work with the worst equipment and they just get the job done. So they really needed a new truck as well. So we were making some capital items, purchases on that. The Financial Planning and Supervision Commission, of which I am a member, meets probably every six weeks or so to go over, we get the financial reports. And so we're looking at updating that financial recovery plan based upon some increased revenue numbers, both from Paycor. As you know, Paycor announced that they're going to be doing another addition, a garage and another office building. But the hotel at the Residence Inn over at Rookwood will now start to kick in with hotel tax money. We got very little of that last year because they were late, it was late in the year when they opened. And so we'll be upgrading our financial recovery plan. And when that gets up, probably sometime around the end of February or March. And when that gets updated, I'll have a better picture of where we are and what we look like more long-term. But just know that there are a lot of people working on that and we are making progress. Something I reported on earlier today, a couple of things I wanted to make you aware of was that where the old woodworking place is up on Montgomery Road next to the United Dairy Farmer Building is probably going to start demolition sometime this month. TWG is a developer who was putting low-income senior apartments in there. I pray that it stays low-income senior apartments. There was some discussion after the planning commission and among council members about making sure that remained seniors. In order to get some tax credits or to make those senior housing, at least one person has to be over the age of 55. Somehow doesn't seem like a senior to me, but one person has to be 55. And then originally, we were told that nobody under the age of 40 would be able to live in those apartments. That is not true anymore. They said that they could not make those restrictions. But they have told us, trust us, trust us, nobody young is going to want to live there. They won't be tolerated because people who will be the main people who are living in those apartments will not tolerate it. I hope that that's true. But it's going to be four stories. And so I'll look for that demolition to start sometime later this month. And then while I was in the building department, looking up or getting some information on another topic, a gentleman was in there from the, he was doing the Quality Hotel project. And I had noticed that they were, they were doing soil samples. I don't know if you saw that as you were going by. And that either meant, uh-oh, we got a problem, or maybe they're finally starting to move on it. And apparently it means we're finally starting to move on it. He assured me that they did not anticipate anything happening, but the lenders that they are going to be part of the project wanted, require that they do soil samples and then they test for asbestos in the hotel. And they were in the process of doing that. He said they would get those reports back in about two weeks. And once they did that, they put it out for bid for lending. And he anticipated that they'd be starting within the next 16 to 90 days. We'll see. So I know you ask, everybody asks about that all the time, so I just thought I would let you know those things. And if there's anything else that you, any questions you have, or if there's anything that I can help with or take back to council or to the administration, I'd be happy to do so. And congratulations on the swim team, by the way. Ranked number two.
Yeah, number two.
Donna, can you talk to us a little bit about Safe Routes to School?
Oh, yes. So Deb Robinson and I, several years ago, Deb is the driving force behind this. I will give 99% of the credit to Deb Robinson. We talked about applying for Safe Routes to School grants and we, there was a lot of work involved that had to do with looking where children lived and how they came to school and developing a plan. And that took us a couple of years, honestly. And once that travel plan was approved, we were then approved to go ahead and apply for grants. And we did that three years in a row. We were successful the first two years. The third year, they, we were not awarded that grant and I'm, it was because it was just one intersection with nothing but traffic lights. But the other two projects have been approved. And it's about $400,000 worth of work that will be done. And it involves crosswalk upgrades. You're going to have two speed humps in front of Williams Avenue School. We're going to try that out and see how that works out. Not the big, not the speed bumps, but the bigger speed humps that will slow people down. There will be some really very bright lighting or overhead lines that as cars approach from the crosswalk from Montgomery Road, and there's also one down at the other end by Elsmere. There are flashing lights. They are very bright lights, so they'll get people's attention to slow people down in front of the school. It involves crosswalk upgrades and pedestrian headlights in front of every school. We're not allowed to do the high school, but in front of every other school except the high school and all those crosswalks. So that work has been estimated. There, on council, the next meeting, we will have the preliminary legislation authorizing them to go ahead and do the project. And it's anticipated that that'll probably start in about August. We know that you're going through a lot of construction and so Deb has already given your name and contact information to the people who will be doing the Safe Routes to School construction. It's all done through the Ohio Department of Transportation. It's federal money that comes through the State of Ohio. And so it's actually a grant to the city, but it's for the schools. And hence, you know, Deb and I have worked together for a long time and she's amazing and did the lion's share of the work, I have to tell you, so.
This is part of that program that works with AAA?
Um, no, you can do, we, well, we got, this year, or last year, we not only applied for some construction money, but we also applied for educational money. And we were awarded the educational money. So these, these projects were from previous grant years.
But this is a separate money pool than going from AAA?
Yes. Yes. Yeah. And I think they're doing some, with Children's Hospital, Deb is doing some education in the schools and training, maybe, I think, maybe training students on being guards or assisting, I don't know.
I don't think so.
No? It's some kind of an educational thing in the school. I'm not sure exactly what's involved in that.
They were talking about developing mentors for older students?
That might be, yeah, that's what it is, yeah.
The younger students about safety, but not necessarily having them be guards anymore?
Right. Right. That's right. Yeah. You're right. AAA does have a program of crossing guards, but that's a totally separate program.
Thank you, Donna.
So you had mentioned earlier, when you were talking about fiscal emergency, you had mentioned that the city ended 2017 at what, 1.1, 1.3 million dollars? I know that scares a lot of people and that's a pretty big red number. But can you tell us that the actual projected value that the city was expecting to end was closer to 2.1?
Yeah, I think it was anticipated that we would probably be about 1.7 or 1.8. And so we are really in a much better position than we, than we were anticipated. I don't have the plan in front of me, but it's a plan that will get us eat without, with the information that we had at the time. If we did nothing, we would get out of fiscal emergency in about five years. And people are not willing to do just nothing. You know, there are things that we're looking at. We're looking at the 911 center, whether or not it would be more efficient to go with the county, or is it more efficient for us to keep our 911? Those are things that we're looking at. It's not to say that we're going to take any action, but we're looking at whether that's a cost-saving or whether it isn't a cost savings. We were looking at retirees' health care. And we were in place to have a plan, a new plan, and that got sidetracked. It was just kind of last minute. And so I have taken that on as a personal goal of mine to make sure that that is done this year so that we can reduce the costs from those retirees' health care costs. Also, all of the, well, we don't have a contract with the police department yet, but all of the other contracts with our unions are up at the end of this calendar year. And so we're starting to do negotiations. And I'm telling you, one of the things that we are, that we will be definitely negotiating on is we will no longer pay 100% of an employee's health care, but health insurance. We just, nobody does it, nobody can afford it. And if you don't have any skin in the game, there's no incentive for you to try to save money. So that's going to be one of the things that we're going to be looking at to cut costs long-term. We're also looking at personnel levels as well.
So as you look at the financial plan moving forward with the city since you sit on that committee, are you guys going to try and revise that to eliminate the fiscal emergency status sooner than?
Definitely. And based upon the information that we have now, you know, better information, what our projections are on earnings tax, we, that plan will, is a fluid, as they say, it's a fluid document. So as we become aware of different things, increase revenue, or if there are increased costs on something, if something would happen that we would, you know, if something happened and we needed to replace a boiler or something, we would have to update that plan. But the plan is not to take five years, I can guarantee you that. I think the hope is more like two or three.
Thank you.
Yeah. You're welcome.
All right. Thank you.
You're very welcome.
We appreciate it.
Our next item is board calls. Dr. Segal?
Thank you. Just as a note, I want to let everyone know that our board policy, we use Ohio School Boards Association, that's OSBA, to interpret the legislative required changes. And they inform us quarterly about adoptions that are highly suggested and recommended. So presently, as it stands, we review the policy and we bring it to you as a committee for a first reading. And then at our board meeting, we have a second meeting. And we perhaps could change that. It was noted that at committee, that just simply gives the opportunity for folks to hear it, but not necessarily participate in the discussion. So that's just something I wanted to bring up tonight to bring to your attention that perhaps could be something that we would want to change as we move forward. The other reason that board policy is on our discussion items for tonight is because next month, which is March, will be at the middle school auditorium. During committee, we'll be sharing with you a document, software that's called Board Documents. And it will help you with great ease to review the number of exhibits that we share with you in light of a board meeting or a committee meeting. I know for tonight, I think our document is 177 pages in length. And so when you receive that and via email, it's difficult to look through all those documents. So this software system will help you, does not come at a great cost. It's about $2,700 a year. And it will help us on our end to prepare board agendas for you with greater ease as well. But it will help too, for you to see those documents. So our intention is at committee meetings and board meetings moving forward, you'll have a Chromebook in front of you that we'll provide and you'll be easily able to access those. But at our next committee meeting, you'll go through a little bit of training, as well we'll all be going through the training at the same time. So just want you to know that you have that to look forward to when it comes to board policy.
On the board policies, just for clarification, when we receive the revisions of policies and regulations, these are not, to be confused with our handbook policies of our district, they're legislative, they're coming from the top down, correct?
They are legislative in nature, yes.
So it's not, and as I understand it, we may get options of what we can adopt or what we can change the wording to, but pretty much since we're a public education.
And we accept public dollars.
And we accept federal dollars.
Right.
We can't say, no, we're not going to change it. Or we could, but probably it wouldn't fly.
There are always nuances to it, but we want to, you know, we pay OSBA to legislate. Their legal counsel is looking through each of these state mandates, if you will, or the law, and making good suggestions to school districts all across Ohio. So they're looking at what best fits Ohio, with just Ohio in mind. And so yes, these are high, highly suggested items that we would adopt. You know, there perhaps may be a time when we would want to review one and perhaps change it or seek our legal counsel and how it would best fit us. Oftentimes too, they will propose multiple options that we could adopt within that law.
So, you know, when we talk about board policy, I think it is important to remember that, you know, board policy serves as the umbrella or the overarching theme of support for the foundation for how we function. However, things that could be considered as like a operating procedure or a day-to-day function could be taken away from board policy and actually put into another living document that could be like our district operating procedure. And I think if we worked with OSBA to look at, you know, our current board policy structure and where it could be streamlined, I think we can make ourselves a much more efficient organization. I mean, if you look at our current board policy document right now, if we were to print it out, I think it would take two or three reams of paper in order to print it. I mean, thing would be six inches thick. And so do, does all of those policies need to be board-related policies, or can some of those items in there be taken away and, and put into another less restrictive document? One of the benefits of doing that would be, you know, because with board policies, you have to have the multiple readings and you have to have public impact or public support or whatever. If you take something away from being a board policy because it's like an instruction, like a how-to list of how to do something, and you make it, let's say, a district policy, then that becomes a little bit more controllable by the superintendent or administration. And then when changes need to be made to that, it can be made a lot more fluidly and doesn't require a lot of the restrictions from actually changing board policy. And, and I think there is an opportunity for us to take our board policies and shrink it, move some of the stuff that's in there into a district level, or, or put it into an employee handbook, or student handbook, or district handbook, and, you know, allow us to control how those things evolve over time a whole lot better than it actually being in board policy. So I know we're currently working with OSBA. Kathy does, I know they review it. With what we do currently with the OSBA, would that also include them reviewing our current board policy structure, or would that be an additional cost or additional service?
That would be an additional cost.
Okay. Is there any idea to see how much that would cost for them to help us review that?
Seems like, we talked in the past, isn't that about the tune of like $4,000 to $6,000?
$46,000.
Seems like. And that's something that we spend?
Four, four, two, six, Brandon.
Forty, forty-six.
Four, two, six, not forty-six.
Forty-six, yeah. I was about to try to add all the time.
Seems like we talked about that. Christine, I know we had a conversation about that. You were here when that took place before a person came in in the summer. They spent like four weeks or so.
It's an important process where they review all your policies and just make sure you haven't missed something over the time period. And usually, since we have a new superintendent, that might be something that Dr. Segal wants to do at some point within this first year. And they, they say that's a good idea, just to make sure everything's in line. So when, and when they do review it, they always suggest to boards, keep your policies general and broad enough so that you can make decisions, so you're not strapped with just a strong level of detail. And allow it to say, the superintendent or designee might make this choice.
Right.
So they always, but the way these policies are written are not to trap a board into deciding one thing or another. So then that's deliberate, to keep them general enough that, that there's some freedom and there's some flexibility within Ohio Revised Code that you can make decisions as you're, as you're supposed to. So interesting to note, under the law, there's no obligation to provide two readings. However, under the policy that we've adopted, we agreed to provide two readings of a new policy.
Right. Now with the providing of the, of the two readings of a policy, so, so tonight, we do have on the docket some policy revisions that we're looking at. So tonight would be technically considered the first revision or the first reading of those policy items. Now the public, this is a public meeting and the public is here and they could see it, they could see it on YouTube or, you know, they can listen to it. However, they don't have an opportunity to address this board at this meeting. And when we go to the official board meeting next month, we're going to have the second reading of the document and then the adoption or readoption of that policy. However, the public comment comes at a point in time where we've already adopted it. So either, you know, something that we want to, might want to consider is moving the public comment portion to an earlier point in the meeting and have it before we do any adoption in case anybody wants, has an issue with any of the policies we're thinking about revising or adopting. Or another option would be to make a motion at next month's meeting to temporarily approve the revisions to the board policies, because that's allowed under our structure. And then the following month, have the final adoption of it. So if we make a motion to temporarily approve at next week's meeting, then that gives the superintendent, the administration, the ability to go ahead and enforce the policy revisit changes. And it gives the public an opportunity, gives them a month to kind of mull things over and see how they feel. So that would be something I would recommend for this month for these policy revisions.
My understanding from the workshops that you and I just recently did was that basically everything that, that we want to do as a board, it needs to fit what we're doing. So if that is left broad enough, if it works better for us to move things to a wider stance, we can.
Right.
If we want to do it faster, we can. But there's also, there was also a discussion, similar idea of processing, not having the opportunity for the public to really come up. And some boards suggested having, instead of a comment section at the very beginning of a meeting, because we're already voting on things that happen later, to let the folks know, hey, we're going to be discussing this tonight and any questions directed at item line, you know, A5, questions will be directed to the public at that time of the meeting.
Right.
So that way, you know, folks who want to stay past the award ceremony part of the night, you let them know, hey, at the beginning, we're going to address public questions. And once we get to this public issue that we need your feedback on, that, at that point, we will open the floor for those questions only. So that we can focus the meeting and people aren't forgetting their questions by the time we're actually getting to the vote. We could do that read and do the questions right after the read, just so that way we can engage the public a little bit better as a board. Because I think putting them all at the very beginning, sometimes people forget what they want to ask or don't even know what the issue is until we get there. So I like the idea of being able to be flexible with structuring how we address the public and bring them into it.
I know there's, there's a couple of items in there and we'll get it when we get to the policy committee report, but there's a, there's a couple of revisions here for some board policy items that I think would be better served under a handbook document or a district document instead of a board policy, just because they're so specific.
Some would be required, so we just going to have to make sure that we honor, this is, it totally tells you this is a required policy.
Right.
And then all of the other ones are a reflection of something that's come up in Ohio Revised Code.
Right.
They don't, they don't just create it. There's something, somewhere that they want boards to pay attention to, so.
There's a legislative authority somewhere at the top that is forcing this stuff.
Maybe, maybe what you're really talking about is access. So no one is going to print out, besides the few copies we have in paper. Most people will go to the internet. And if we make that even easier, which is something that Ernie has talked about a lot, Mr. Strasser, how do we make that search engine really fast and clean for people if they have a strong interest in attendance policies or they have a strong interest in graduation requirements? So maybe that's what would be more helpful to people, not so much the notion that, yeah, it's, it's big, it's daunting, but could we get to people what they need to know faster and that might solve that challenge?
Right. But to answer your question, no, access wasn't what I was thinking about. What I was thinking about was, you know, where a board policy would be that umbrella or that framework or that structure, that broad, general covering of it. I think that's something that should be board policy, where you have a multiple step action item list.
Like a regulation?
Not like a regulation, but like this is how we're going to do things on a day-to-day basis. That document should fall under the framework of a board policy, maybe through a generalized statement. And then somewhere within that board policy say, the actual daily operating procedure will live under district policy. And then that way, if we need to make changes to the district policy, we have a lot more flexibility to do that than changing an entire board policy. That's what I'm getting to.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I didn't follow you. I was, I was confused because I, I know that our policies that we have now are revisions as a result of us being a public school district. So I understand that, you know, we have, the policies that are changed are basically to a certain degree forced upon us. We don't have the option to say, no, I'm sorry, we don't want to do that. These approvals that are passed through are passed through because up at the top in our legislative state and federal government, they have said, because you accept public monies and federal monies, you will follow these rules.
Right.
And these will be your policies.
Right. And there's nothing wrong with doing that. What I'm saying is, is that you can have a general umbrella statement covering the requirements that they're forcing onto you.
Right. Which is what we tried to do.
But the actual specific on how you're going to do this on a day-to-day basis doesn't have to be covered under the board policy document. It could be covered under a district level document that has a lot more flexibility to be changed.
Well, but I think what we try and do, and correct me if I'm wrong, I mean, since I've been here, what we've tried to do is less is best. And we've tried to make sure that we worded so that we have that flexibility in that umbrella as opposed to within the district.
I would agree with that. There are some things, like there are physical procedures on certain items that we have put behind the policy. And I, and I think our thinking in that was, it's cleaner, we know right where to go. Even if there's, if there's a change in, in, someone in my position, if I'm not that person anymore, we know that the procedures are right there. So it's been the good go-to and it, it has been recommended. So we haven't, we haven't tried to increase our page numbers with procedures. We've tried to just honor the intent. we know that the procedures are right there. So it's been the good go-to. And it, it has been recommended. Um, so we haven't, we haven't tried to increase our page numbers with procedures. We've tried to just honor the intent of, maybe it's a federal fiscal policy, but a guiding procedural agreement that how do you procure funds? And how do you keep track of your inventory procedures? Because it seems like when we have to, when we're audited, um, not in a big way, but even just an annual audit, they always say, show us your policy, show us your procedures that are adopted by the board. And we know they already have them. So it's an easy answer to a big question. So I think, maybe, um, in the past, we've tried to solve a lot of problems by keeping it clean and keeping it all together. And yes, it becomes a large document, for sure. It does. It just serves many purposes.
I mean, maybe we can par out the procedure as opposed to the policy.
That's what I'm talking about.
No, keep them separate. But, but it's still a board.
That's exactly what I'm talking about. Take, take the day-to-day procedures.
See, the words.
He took the scenic route, it's okay.
Okay. 'Cause I, I know we do, we have a lot of procedures behind the policies. It says, this is really how we end up accomplishing this.
And some of those are required, like you have to say, the board signed off on this procedure. Or, your, how you identify gifted kids, how you do your federal work. They always ask, where's, and, and we are able to prove it by that adoption date or readoption date.
Athletic GPA is another one.
Yeah. So maybe it's two binders, um, so people just wanna see the nuts and bolts of policy. Here it is. But both are eventually approved by the board.
Right.
For the, for the must use. That'd be fair enough.
So the, the difference is, is if you take the procedures and you take them out of board policy and let's say something unexpected happens and there's a legislative change. And that, that daily procedure has to be altered. Then that's something that the administration can do and then propose to the board. And we just adopt it. We don't have to do two readings or, you know, get public approval.
I don't think we'd have to do two readings anyway for the, for the policies.
Yeah.
Under the law, we're not required to.
Right, but under, under our policy, right, under our policy.
Yeah.
Our specific district policy.
That's right.
Right.
So we could change that, but, okay. Whatever's easier, yeah. So, 'cause I know we have a lot of that already in place.
So contrary to what you're suggesting that we make things easier, I'm thinking about, for example, athletic GPA. You know how high school athletics suggests one? And of course, we, you know, have much higher expectation. So, you know, we accepted that, but increased it. So we changed our own?
Yeah, and that's one.
Okay. Well, can we, um, can, can we maybe look into the fact of how difficult it would be to pair out those procedures from the major policies and get back with us?
I'm sure.
Construction update.
Okay. So this will probably be a topic on our agendas for now and for the next few years, right. So, um, of course, we have John with us tonight. And we're gonna talk a little bit about just completing and finishing up that, um, the door project. Uh, the secondary set of doors. And we are nearing the end of that. I think we have a punch list of just a few items left, John.
Just a couple of items. Um, one item is that the camera or intercom system at the front doors of the high school started flaking out a little bit a couple of weeks ago. Um, so we do have the, the, uh, vendor sending us a new camera and intercom that was supposed to arrive either late last week or early this week. So I'm expecting anything now that should be switched out. Uh, we also had a little issue with, um, the access control, changing access on badges and stuff. We're supposed to get a workstation, workstation here in the administration office to make changes to badges or the key fobs. We do have a web-based access for it, but I'm told that only works sporadically. So it doesn't work as well as we'd like. So we're working on getting this software actually loaded there at the workstation. So the connectivity is much more solid, it doesn't drop out. Um, do you wanna go straight into the next?
Well, I, let me just preface the next part of our construction update. And that is to let you know that, um, Mr. Miller, the middle school principal and I, um, he's been working with a number of constituents, um, just to make sure that he's prepared thoughtfully for our very first big phase of construction. So, you know, we're suggesting, um, when, once we go to bid and figure out who our general contractor is, what we're proposing now though, is that we begin all of the work in the west wing. So right now, west wing, the first floor is utilized. The second and third floor, not so much utilized. Um, they're mostly storage spaces at this present time and then used by our after-school programming avenues for success. So there are lots of things that we will need to move to the other side of the building to clear out those rooms. Hopefully, to expedite the actual construction that we hope will begin in May. So that that will give them enough time to have everything ready by August the 17th. And again, as things progress, as we learn who our general contractor is, we'll know better about, um, how that will work. But we do have three phases, um, to the project. Is that right? Eight, one, two, and three?
Yes.
Um, and we are, we do have full intentions to start the school year with all of west wing being completed. And we'll talk to you a little bit tonight about what's in the base bid, uh, what we'll get for our money. And so, we're pretty excited that at least the elevator will be in place, the new elevator. And that will be important as we move people. Once the west wing is completed, when we start school, all of the teachers and students will be in that west wing. Um, and then that will leave the east wing open for construction to complete their work through the school year. So it might be a little bit dusty, a little bit loud, but in the end, it's gonna be really amazing. So John, you wanna talk to us a little bit about what's in that base bid?
Well, the, the foremost thing to push the whole project was the HVAC, trying to get, uh, new heating system as well as air conditioning system. Um, so, so that's the, the number one thing we're, we're looking at. The plumbing side of it is including, uh, replacing a lot of piping, uh, that has just deteriorated over the years. Supply lines, water supply. And about fifty percent of the fixtures, is that what we're kinda landing on? Uh, the roof over the main original wing is part of the base bid. And the field house, um, upgrading the electrical service, uh, fifty percent of the lighting. And so that's all of the lighting in all classrooms. Um, and what other, what others can we mention?
Uh, we talked about painting. This is part of the base bid.
PA system.
Technology.
Lockers.
And under the new re-coding, we have to have a fire alarm alert. Um, so that will be important.
That'll be in the, the technology and the PA system. In the alternate, in the alternate bid areas, we're looking at, uh, the other fifty percent of the lighting, which is field house.
Hallways.
Offices, hallways.
And offices.
And offices. Um, and the roof over the auditorium is another alternate bid. And plumbing in the field house.
That's right. Those are the three alternates. So, we're excited because we'll be going to bid, um, actually, we'll see something in the newspaper tomorrow where we'll be placed out for bid and we'll figure out in a short while who is interested in the project. Ernie, is there anything you wanna add to that?
Yeah, just add a couple of things. First of all, I'll hand out, this is given to you in the monthly report that I sent you. But, it's a little bit, let's, I think it's timely to look at that. It really follows John's work there really well. I think to just keep track of, of our construction budget. And so on the first page, what you'll see, and what I think we should always keep coming back to is that, uh, right-hand side, the first kind of blue tinted line, that's what we started with, which was a forty-one and a half million dollar project. So as we hold ourselves accountable to that, to the dollars that we have available, we already know, just in just talking about an elevator, for example, that there has been some scope added to this project that is very much needed. I don't think anybody would argue against any of the things that would be added in the scope. But we have to keep track of how we're gonna pay for those things. So under the middle school, you will notice the eight-hundred-and-fifty-five thousand dollars in additional scope. On the second page, you'll see what those items involve. These are all in the base bid now as base scope of work. And you can see the elevator at three-hundred-and-fifteen thousand, painting of the entire building. So much work was going on in there that it's gonna be very difficult to patch and paint. You also have the lockers that John spoke about. Those are the items now that have been added after really a few months, now several months of work to really figure out the best place to spend what dollars we have available. As a board member though, you're gonna ask yourself, okay, we're at forty-one, five-ninety-five. Are we spending part of the dollars that are needed for buildings later? Because, one of the things that gives us anxiety is this is the first building in the project. And so, uh, we can't hope it away. We can't spend the dollars for the other buildings. And we are not. We did not, the financing that we put in place for this project, uh, has some variance to it. The question is whether we use it or not. And in this case, you'll see on the bottom line of that first page that this variance is at about nine-point-three percent over the original budget. That includes, by the way, an additional four-hundred-thousand dollars in contingency, uh, unexpected items that we may run into. And we have the capacity to pay for that for this building and to also be able to maintain the program that we have for the other five buildings. And so, my report to you is that, yes, we can do those things. Yes, we do have the capacity. But as the last few months have taught us, really, it's been a few months, it's just been, uh, getting a lot of press lately, is that we have to keep our eye on interest rates too. Because as interest rates go up, and I have, and I've done some what-if modeling about how far could the rates move and impact this. But if we stay at that under-ten percent variance level, uh, going forward, we will be, uh, able to manage through this and be able to have, um, the, the capacity to fund this project. Now, let's talk about the alternates that aren't here. And this is why it's been, you know, pretty darn thoughtful in terms of what we've done. The expanded lighting is one-hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars. These are three alternates that are not included in that nine-point-three percent variance. An auditorium roof at ninety-two-four is an estimate for that. But again, there would also be a potential deduct for the resurfacing that's in the base bid. And then the field house plumbing at two-hundred-and-sixteen thousand. The field house plumbing is, if you, if you agree with this concept, is a perfect standalone project that you could circle back and do later. And so rather than trying to do all of these things at once and then start causing additional pressure on these other projects that you're gonna have, it's gonna take some time. By the way, the added problem other than interest rate goes hand-in-hand is inflation. And so, both of those things will be detrimental to the project long-term, so we're gonna keep a close eye on those. So, the field house plumbing is put in there as an alternative. If it would be a really, really good bid that you just couldn't pass up, that might be a different consideration. But it's also an ideal project to circle back to if we have money as we get closer to the end of the project or additional funds become available to us. So, we're headed into that. Also hand out, so that you will see this, um, text that was sent in for the bid. You'll be asked to approve this, by the way, at the next board meeting, just to give your confirmation to it before we open any bids. And you will see that in the middle of this, the bid estimate is for eleven million, seven-hundred thousand. That's actually the hard cost of construction for this building. So it doesn't include things like architect services or other fees. That's actually what, uh, the contractor would submit to you. The estimate is eleven million, seven-hundred thousand. And then the alternates are estimated at approximately four-hundred thousand. So, if we took all of the alternates and everything, it would be a twelve million, one-hundred thousand hard cost. They call it, uh, project for construction. We'll evaluate that as we get closer to the day. And you'll notice two yellow boxes in the middle school column. Uh, we, we want to have bid result adjustment be in our favor and we want to be, the alternates that are accepted to be affordable. And so those are two things that, uh, we really won't know until we open bids on March first at three o'clock PM.
Do you have a question for you? For the current plan for the elevator, is that gonna dig down past that base floor to allow access inside for the, I guess it's the girls' gym that could connect to the field house? 'Cause right now, our kids who are in wheelchairs or limited mobility all have to go outside to access the wheel, to access the field house. So will that elevator dig down and allow them flat access?
It's not so much dig down, it's that it's about thirty feet away from,
Right, I didn't know if there would be a hallway created there.
There's four landings of the four floors.
But currently, their, um, physical education class is held in the high school gym.
Right, but during construction, they can't get across the bridge though. Which will put them even farther away from being able to access an indoor, back and forth.
Well, they've been re, they've been replaced, um, and put into a different part of the high school. So the high school unit and the middle school unit won't be in that hallway at all clearly during construction.
Will they be moved over to the high school building during construction phase completely?
Completely.
That, that's right.
Um, now, some of the middle schoolers were staying, stay in the middle school. And actually, Shannon, we reviewed this plan last week. I know the high schoolers were going to go to the cafeteria, but we moved them to another space right by the cafeteria. And the middle schoolers, I'm trying to remember where they were gonna go.
They're going over to the east wing.
Okay.
Of the middle school, to one of, it's an empty classroom.
Okay. Uh, my other question, um, we, we did a tour last week. So I got to see kind of preliminary of what's, what's gonna happen, where stuff's gonna go. I noticed in here, there was a section for lockers, for new lockers. And when I was walking through, a lot of lockers that used to be there aren't there anymore. So I didn't know, are the lockers gonna be put back in the boys'-girls locker rooms that used to be there? 'Cause those bays are completely empty. Or is that gonna be a, like, communal sink area and the lockers are gonna be moved out somewhere else? Where, where are those projected to go?
So lockers right now are planned to be in the main hall base.
Along the walls?
So the, the quality of the lockers that are in the locker bay areas is, they're newer. So they didn't need to be replaced.
Okay.
And so, this allows us, was it four hundred lockers or five hundred?
I think it's actually six hundred.
Is it six hundred? I know that we added an additional hundred just recently because that wasn't going to be enough. We wanted them, um, in the main hall areas of the building.
Okay.
Little question, and I'm sure this is,
I know they're very excited about the lockers.
Our architects have probably already talked about this. But, on the lighting, is there any grant money or anything that's available for us to help lower our costs? Because we're, we could get energy-efficient lighting that turns off within, you know, like we did in the gym or?
So, Ernie and I looked into that, um, uh, for the Ohio School facilities. And there was another organization that we met with too, Ernie. I'm trying to remember the name of that.
Green and Clean Energy or something like that.
Green and Clean, yes. Um, and it didn't, didn't seem so far, although we have a second meeting with OFC to meet with them. So perhaps there could be some, not just with regard to lighting, but some potential help down the road monetarily. But right now, no, there is not. I do know the lights will be placed on Denver's, which would be nice. And that will save some.
The, the lighting itself, yes. The lighting itself is done as if we were doing an energy project, for example. We're going the most efficient route that we can go. Uh, we didn't see the need for any kind of additional borrowing capacity right now. But that's also another layer that could be added down the road, um, if we need to have. And then, of course, Kathy and I did meet with, uh, OSFC in December, just to bring them up to speed on our project. And there has been, not related to an energy project, but for districts who didn't qualify for any OSFC funding because of building size or those kinds of things, and we understood it at first, or at least I did, that there would be at least a minimum amount of OSFC funding available. So with our architect, Kathy's had some conversation with him. We're circling back to that conversation to see if, if that is a potential source of some additional funds. Not, no indication that that's any kind of windfall of money or going to impact what we're deciding to do today. But the energy part of this project, whether it's HVAC, all of it would qualify for energy financing if we needed that capacity. And that would be the same as you head through these buildings. I just don't see the need for the capacity yet. And I hope we don't have it.
I'm wondering why it's an if though. If we can get it, why not get it and use that money in other ways and other upgrades? Rather, like you were saying, it may be a ten percent contingency. Why worry about a maybe? If we can get those grants and save some money?
It's not grants. You're still paying.
Or if there are energy grants available.
It's financing.
That kind of thing.
We absolutely have looked for, there's none have surfaced. But what I'm talking about here is that, um, financing capacity is available. If you go in and replace these lights, there will be less energy used. You can use the savings to pay for the debt.
Oh, okay.
So,
I got you, I got you.
That's capacity we can use later. In terms of there being, uh, John did get some rebates from Duke Energy. I think you last said that those had pretty much dried up.
As of October, Duke did away with their, Duke, their, uh, energy incentives that they were running. Last I heard, that as the new year started, they were gonna try to bring them back. I have not heard yet if they have started bringing them back yet. What I had been told last year, well, when I bought light fixtures last year, they were giving a seventy-five percent off on each fixture. So it was, it was a heck of a deal. I got a feeling as they start into this year, they're not gonna do seventy-five percent, but they might do fifty. That being said, as the contractor has the, the contract and they're buying the fixtures, they're buying with their rate.
So that's a perfect example. And the question is good, and I'm glad you asked it. 'Cause I wouldn't wanna leave here thinking that we aren't taking advantage of something. We aren't taking advantage of the financing right now. But in terms of those kind of things, when they're available, we've taken advantage of them. and will continue to do so.
Okay.
Are we finished with construction?
I think we are.
All right. Onto Allison update.
Thank you. So, we recently had a water leak in Allison, and we thought the water was shut off. There are actually two access points to Allison. So, both access points have now been shut off. And the leak ended up being minor after John was able to get all of that cleaned up. So, that was of no consequence. And we recently also had shut off the gas. And we're still providing security to that space.
Questions?
No.
All right. Next item is the RFP for our janitorial services.
So, we do intend at some point to request a proposal for janitorial services. And that is simply because our contract with Scarlet and Gray will expire in May. And we intended to entertain other companies. Are there other ideas on the table that we should also consider?
I have one. And I don't know if it's feasible for this year. Probably not feasible for this year. You have to talk to Ernie for a little bit on it. But at least something to consider is, when we do this, if we decide, okay, let's put the proposal out, let's do it for one year only, and at the same time, do a study on what would the true cost be to hire a night crew to come in, work eight hours a night, and be our people to be here? Have a couple in each building, how many would we need? Have a couple of the bigger buildings and the elementaries have one, have a couple floaters around. They would be here eight hours versus Scarlet coming in here for three or four hours a night. You'd have them all summer, instead of having them a couple of weeks in the summer. They could help you with moving classrooms. And then, once they get done with the cleaning portion, do some light maintenance work if needed and small stuff like that. Don't know what the cost would be. Would it cost more? Maybe. But is there a bigger benefit from having them as our people? And even if we have to pay a little more to get them, having them here all the time instead of? And the other problem we've had in the past with Scarlet is, those of you who have been in the middle school know, things tend to go missing from time to time. And when we address it with Scarlet, they do take the people out of the picture. But if they're here, they're ours. So, they're a little more conscious, they're a little more accountable for what's going on. And let's put somebody in the building every night. Yeah, you hope.
If they did eight-hour shifts versus like everyday three-hour, would it be like every other day? Like three times a week instead of daily?
No, I would have them in here daily. Plus, you have somebody in the building every night, all night, instead of having the building sitting empty.
So, double security.
Yeah. To double check, that would be my suggestion.
Scott and I had a few minutes to discuss that, and it's certainly a big change. It's certainly worth getting the numbers together for it. Having that kind of decision between now and May is probably gonna be difficult, as we discussed. But having the board say to us, you know, as an administrative team, that, look, by December 31st, did another round of RFP for custodial. We wanna know, what are our options here with respect to this? And some of it will be kind of intangible, as we discussed, that it may be that it does cost a little bit more to do one part, but there may be some intangibles that you're not accustomed to getting now in that building. But definitely, we're studying. You should always look at options, just difficult to do in this timeframe, as you and I talked about. So, with that particular.
And like we said, there's equipment that would have to be purchased that we don't have.
And training.
And training. And on the other side of it, though, you know, we started doing these bids on this, it's probably been 12 years, 11, 12 years ago, we started doing this on a regular basis with our cleaning. And we've seen 10 different companies come in and bid, and we've seen one company come in and bid. That's it. I mean, sometimes it varies. So, it really depends on the market, and it depends on, we've seen a great cost savings and low quality. And we've seen no cost savings and no quality. So, we'd like to see some quality.
At least that way, you get your rooms, just fit every other room or every other floor. You'd be able to get all the rooms cleaned one time.
And actually turn the lights out when I leave the room.
So, I do have a question, and hopefully, I could get an answer. Is there a reason why the cleaning contract is not subject to the competitive bidding requirements under higher revised code? I know that's in Article 111. It says this contract is not subject to the competitive bidding requirements. Is there a reason why that's in there?
What we were always told is because of competition. There's not a lot of people out there that will bid on it.
It's also a services contract. It's a personal services-type contract as well, which exempts it from that provision.
Okay. All right. I was just asking. Another statement I wanna make about this contract. And I went in an informal survey, and the general consistency that I found on the people that I had spoken to is that, you know, typically, in the beginning of the year, there's a lot of energy and the quality is a whole lot better. But as the year goes on, the quality just starts going downhill pretty quickly. And I'm just wondering, in the new contract proposal that we put out, is there any way we can add a stipulation that, you know, once a quarter or twice a year, that we audit the cleaning service that wins the award? If that's what we decide to do? In order to be able to have some stipulations that if you're not providing the quality of service, then there's some penalty to that? Is that something that could be added?
It's your RFP, and so, you can put any provision in it. I would tell you that I believe that you have that ability now. I mean, I wasn't involved in how these were issued in the past. But our ability to look at someone and say, the services are unacceptable, and here's what needs to be done for improvement, is there. But, you know, the purpose for your superintendent giving you this now in advance is, what input do you wanna have on this as you go forward? Whether it's, you know, do you limit it to a year so that you can do this parallel study? Do you put in some of these kinds of thoughts with regard to, you know, three times a year, we'll do a specific unannounced type of review of the work?
Yeah, absolutely. And I like Scott's idea of looking at the cost of what it would, what it would cost us to take this whole thing in-house.
I think we certainly can do a cost analysis for that. But I can say, with respect to working with Scarlet and Gray presently, at the building level, as well as at the district level, if we share concern, they are quick to respond.
Okay.
And they do work to correct things.
I do have a question on that. I've heard a lot of rumors and things about the leadership at Scarlet and Gray have changed and some instability. Has that been something that you guys have seen?
No.
Because I know that the managers or owners, or whoever they were, they are gone. I mean, the two top people that ran our district are, they left, I guess, in the summer?
I think they're the same people.
Don is gone, but the site supervisor, he's been here for about a year and a half now. The owner of the company is the same.
Okay. I was told that Don and his, I guess it was his brother, that kind of oversaw the whole thing. Both were gone.
I think that's somebody else. Ray out.
Tim.
Tim is broke.
Yeah.
He's been gone for four, five years, somewhere else.
Okay. Just checking.
Thanks for asking.
Okay. The next item would be an RFP for a new realtor.
Yes, so we intend to put such a document together to search for a sales agent that specializes in commercial real estate, since the property that we own, that we'd like to sell, is so commercial.
So, I did send you a document, just one I found online from the city of Akron. And again, food for thought, just kind of let us know the input on what you might identify as additional services that you'd like to see in there or things that maybe don't belong in there as well.
Some questions? All right. The next item will be our education committee report.
All right.
Dr. Sabo, come go ahead and read through all this.
Oh, okay.
Thank you. So, you'll see here just dates to approve middle and high school conferences for next school year. Last month, we approved our elementary conference dates. You'll see a field trip for Norwood High School. And.
We have personnel superintendent recommendations.
Yes. So, you see a resignation, as well as mentors. And you see supplemental contracts. You'll notice that we're working a little bit on spring. And hopefully, soon, we'll be, we're working on fall and winter of next school year. You also see coaches under number four. And.
Any discussion, questions? All right. Moving on.
So, the next component is our policy. And of course, there are a number of policies here. Christina Cheston and I worked to take a look at those this week. And we provided those in our exhibits, and we can go one by one. Christina?
Okay. So, the first one is the business advisory. That's probably the one that might call for the most discussion tonight because that's, we have a business advisor council to the board, but now, they're being asked to do more work than they've been called to do in the past. So, you might notice in this policy, there's some dates, and those haven't been, there's some rules about this. So, this business advisory council, the intention is that it would, this council would provide recommendations to the board on matters that the board asks them to work on. So, they aren't, they are a council, but they're a council to your board. So, you might say to this board, we'd like for you to report back to us about changes in our local economy and how our graduates might enter the workforce, just as an easy example. And that board might report back to you on that kind of a topic. Or originally, what do they notice? So, they, let's see, they advise all of you based on what you, what you kind of ask them to do. So, what's interesting about this board is that we are asked to file this joint statement. So, there's a timeline, by March 1st, describing each year what they've worked on. So, the time is tight for us this first year in terms of telling them what kinds of things we worked on. I would think it's important to mention that some districts, especially small districts like ours, there's an option to work with your educational service center. We, of course, have a great relationship with our Hamilton County Educational Service Center. We could work with their business advisory group, their council, and say, this first year, as you decide, gosh, what businesses might we want to invite to the table? We would be, we are permitted to work with the Hamilton County one so that we don't have to rush to ask this business president and that business president this quickly by March 1st. We could just embrace their business advisory group the first year or part of the year until we know exactly the direction the board wants to take on it. So, I offer that up because I know some other districts that are small, like ours, or who might have even had a small committee of people that will work on projects that don't quite fit the need, because this is certainly a specific job that they would be tasked to do. So, our Hamilton County said, sure, you're welcome to do that. We have other districts, too, and they already have one in place that might offer their support so we can make these timelines right away. As you all say, oh, let's think of these 10 businesses and reach out to them over the next six months and form our own. So, I offer that up as just some behind-the-scenes research that we've done about how exactly we could fulfill this requirement in a legitimate way that makes us feel good about the work.
And as an exhibit, we included a proposed MOU with Hamilton County Educational Service Center. And just to add to that, some of the districts are not only small, but some are larger, that are choosing to work with Hamilton County for this first year of implementation of this new expectation.
So, I was looking at that, and that policy was originally adopted in 2000 and then readopted in 2012. So, who was on our business advisory council?
Well, and added to it, and I don't know that I can speak to that, perhaps Christine could, but it was also readopted with changes in December of 2017, which need to be implemented, they expect right away.
Right.
So, that's why, you know, county superintendents worked together and reached out to Hamilton County to supply that need.
Okay. No, I completely understand that. I was just wondering, what did we do in the past?
So, it didn't have the teeth it has now, quite frankly. And we didn't really have an official council that met regularly. There might have been business people that offered input, but it didn't say, like now, it's like, you have to report on what you're redoing. Before, the policy was, here it is, share what you're working on with ODE, file it with ODE. But there was no, like, must-do, 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 like it seems to be now. So, we just didn't have a formal one in the past.
Yeah. I think what we did, from what I, since I've been on board, is that we, through the Chamber of Commerce and through other organizations that board members and also our superintendent are part of, I think when we came upon things that we questioned, we reached out, and either Xavier University, we reached out or had someone reach out to them, and they were kind of advised us on different types of, you know, professionals. We directly, when something came up and we felt like we wanted to pursue something, we would identify a professional we could go to and ask questions. So, it was kind of a fluctuating advisory board, depending on what we wanted to.
You're right, like the Chamber served that officially, but, yeah.
We have a number of business partnerships.
Right.
Not only through avenues for success, my goodness, her list, Mrs. Ferguson's list of business partnerships is extraordinary. With Mrs. Robinson and our family community work, her listing, too, would be extraordinary.
Yeah. So, we didn't really have a board that we put together that named individuals. It was, it was more or less, we determined what we needed to know on a need-to-know basis.
When you speak about teeth, Mrs. Cheston, you know, this on your second page of your document, there are specific reports due on certain dates.
Quarterly report, they have to.
Right. So, Hamilton County will help us support that work.
Right. We have to document that now.
So, in the spirit of it, we certainly wanna do it well. But for this first year, we think we do want that support from Hamilton County, and we see ourselves potentially breaking away from that.
Okay. All right.
Okay. Next is the emergency management and safety plans. There are, there's one policy and one regulation about that. So, there's just some updates with that there. The policy talks about that the plan has to have four areas. And this plan, just as behind-the-scenes information, it's uploaded through a site that all public school entities go through. So, we tell ODE what our crisis plan looks like. We show them our floor plans, we show them our site plans, we have an emergency contact sheet, and we do that every year. You're not required to do it annually, but we do it just to make sure nothing changes so we don't, just don't miss a beat. So, this plan is a readoption of a plan we have. And you can see all the bold are just their changes in the words that they chose. So, I just wanted to draw your attention to that 1, 2, 3, 4th paragraph that tells that they specifically want the plan to include those parts, and we do report that annually.
I noticed that they included bullying on that emergency plan.
They did. That's a little different. So, in our crisis plan, that's something that we wanted to fact-check because most of our crisis plan, I have to make sure that it goes to that level of detail because it often talks about much, it talks about things, things that might occur that might be a crisis for a lot of people and not just one, two, or three. So, we'll have to determine that if our crisis plan has that component within. And certainly, bullying is a part of all of our handbooks.
Right.
But it has to be in our crisis plan as well, that's approved by our city departments as well each year.
But then, that goes as a statistic that gets reported back to the state, right?
Yes. You do that already anyways. Every year, you have to report the first semester and second semester posted on your website. So, we update that during each year. That part isn't new. So, but this management is just a little bit of a tweaking of some of the work that we've already done. Next is drug testing.
Hold on. I do have another question about the regulation. So, the, what is it, EBCR? So, I'm reading this board policy, and because it's the rules of protocols, this thing reads more like a day-to-day item. And this is, this is a document that I think could live under like a district policy. So, we could have an overarching statement that we do have protocols under board policy, but the actual listing of the protocols and the administrative rules could be part of a district policy. So, that's one of the items that I was talking about earlier.
Okay. Next is the drug testing for district personnel that to hold a commercial driver's license. Now, of course, we don't currently have district personnel that hold a commercial driver's license for our day-to-day operations, but we always have embraced these policies just in case. And so right now we work with a third-party vendor with Peterman, we work with.
Medicare, transportation.
So they all have their own guiding policies that guide their work. But if ever we had this, we wouldn't want to have to go back and update five policies then. So we just, everything's in keeping with if we ever had it. And it is a required policy for districts. So I don't think it would be good to opt out anyway because that would be, you just would have to explain it. It has a corresponding regulation as well.
But wouldn't that be anybody that would be driving a truck for the school?
Only if we employ them. It's a commercial driver's license, I think that's the note, the note is different.
Oh, okay, so we're using the.
So for example, you know, I was thinking about, for example, we work with the city sometimes to use their transportation van for after-school clubs as well as swimming.
Yeah, yeah, the, so for the swim team, we use the recreation short bus and that's driven by a city employee.
So if they are required to hold a commercial driver's license, then, then this would apply to them. Only, I don't know, I don't know the answer if someone who drives the shorter bus is required to hold a commercial driver's license as well or not.
I don't think so.
I think a CDL is.
Depends on the type of bus.
Right. It's the number of axle.
What do you drive?
The weight.
Yeah, for example, our custodian will drive for after-school cooking club sometimes.
Yeah, so this really is our school bus drivers. If we had a fleet of buses. And the regulation, you'll notice that they crossed out some things. And really what they were doing is they, they didn't want specifically named certain drugs. They wanted to expand their, what they test, what the testing involves. So it expanded to other semi-synthetic opioids is the reason they crossed that out. So it's not that they're not looking for these drugs, but they're looking for much more. That's why you'll see those drugs crossed out on the regulation.
Now, is that, is that required by Ohio law to be part of our board policy? Or again, can that, can that list live in another document?
So this regulation, you mean?
Yeah.
It's a required regulation, so I don't know if it matters to them if it's in two binders or not, but it is, the regulation is required. So when I think of, I'll have to ask if because it's required, you have to also be board approved. My assumption has always been that if it's required, it should be board approved as a matter of procedure.
Right.
Because it's cleaner. So I know this regulation for sure is required as well. So I'll get a stronger level of detail for that.
It's a way to protect the district.
The no tobacco use on district property by staff members and the one that's later on by students and the no tobacco use on district property, all of those, we always go with the version that says with 100%, we are tobacco-free. We have grants that we've written honoring that mantra. It allows us to, it allows us to work really closely with Children's Hospital on some of those grants. So it wasn't something ever in the past that the board would. We've always had version two, which just means we're tobacco-free. So again, we're just updating this version and there aren't, there aren't too many changes to it. It's just in keeping with the spirit of what we've done in the past. And we're keeping the same language that we've had for all of the policies before.
So I've noticed in two of the, two of those policies on the tobacco use that we have a specific statement talking about e-cigarettes.
E-cigarettes?
Right, however, that statement is missing from the tobacco use by students. Is it JFGG? Or JFCG? So in that, in that policy, that, there is no statement specifically calling out e-cigarettes are going to be treated as tobacco. I think that statement should be included in that, in that policy.
Where are you seeing that, Mr. Edward?
I'm not seeing it.
Okay, because I'm on page one of three and I see electronic cigarettes. Are you, you said by students?
Yeah, by students, yeah. JFCG. Sorry, I don't have those policies. I have them on.
This is why board docs will be awesome, won't it? When we get it, we won't have all these papers to review. So did you see the note at the bottom? It says House Bill 144 added alternative nicotine products and electronic cigarettes to the juvenile tobacco laws.
Okay, so is, does your version in paragraph two say tobacco? Is it just line 2, 3, any lighted or unlighted cigarette, cigar, pipe?
It's whatever was attached as the exhibit to the.
It mentions electronic cigarettes in paragraph two. It just doesn't have it as a separate line. It's on the second line in paragraph two.
So unless cigar, pipe, clove cigarette, a biddy, I don't even know what that. Alternative nicotine products.
I printed them out.
Electronic cigarettes and any other smoking product and spit tobacco, also known as smokeless dip, chew, snuff. Is it not, do you not see it in your pocket?
So I, I do and I'm, so it says for the purpose of this policy, tobacco is defined to include any lighted or unlighted cigarette, cigar pipe, biddy or biddy, I don't even know what that is, clove cigarette or any other smoking product and spit tobacco, also known as smokeless dip, chew, snuff in any form. What it doesn't include as is included in the other policy is that for the purpose of this district, electronic cigarettes are going to be defined as, or considered as tobacco.
But it says it on this one that I've got down here. Version two down here does specify electronic cigarettes and not.
So we have multiple versions of this thing floating around?
So there's an OSBA version and then there's a North City Schools version. I can pass this down to you so you can see.
Right. So what, what, what version are we using then?
So we look at OSBA and we apply that to our present and we make those changes. So sometimes you'll see strike-throughs that way, right?
Right, so, so this is, this is the version that's not included in the exhibit that we were given?
It should have been. It's just they include both. They want to show you how it's changed.
Right, yeah, this wasn't included in the exhibit.
Okay, then that was an error, so we apologize for that. But you're right, so that one does draw the attention to the electronic cigarette.
Okay.
So we apologize if that wasn't included. It should have been, we try to include both the OSBA version and the North City version so you can see what our current policy is and where we like to shift to.
Okay.
Yeah, we just have it up.
And according to Wikipedia, a BDI can be spelled B-I-D-I or B-E-E-D-I, but it is essentially a type of cheap cigarette made of unprocessed tobacco wrapped in leaves.
Okay. I learned something new there.
Case you all wanted to know because we didn't even know how to pronounce it exactly.
Next is career advising. This is a current policy and so it is a required policy that we'll be adopting again. I, we, the student success plans, we call them something different. So we're going to make that change so it's in keeping with the spirit of this policy. We have plans for students at risk, but we don't refer to them as SSPs. So we will now, just to make sure that it's very clean. We do a lot of career advising. We're so grateful for the huge grant that we have through PRUP. But even before that, we had counselors doing great career advising. We have nice programs that guide us as well. So we have a lot of things in place to help our students besides the human component of just good adults that are working with students and especially students identified at risk of dropping out. So that's an updated policy. The homeless policy, what I believe happened in this honestly is we, we did a lot of changes to homelessness based on the change at the state level which required us to switch from days to hours. So everything may count for, if you remember, those of you that were part of the board previously know that everything moved from number of days to number of hours students are enrolled. So we've been asked, we've been called to do a lot of different things about when students meet, miss, you know, whatever the big ticket items are, 12 hours, 36 hours, 48 hours, excused and unexcused or sometimes irregardless of either one. So this follows suit with that. And McKinney-Bento Homeless Assistant Act is guiding, the guiding force for all this. We do have someone that works on that. Our EMIS person is, is our liaison for that work, making sure that we are honoring all the rules and regulations of that federal law. But this homeless admission just talks about calling out the McKinney-Bento and then it is a required policy.
Do you know offhand how many homeless people?
Students we have, I should have known that for tonight, I don't. In the past, it's been, it's been low before. It's been a handful, like three or five. And we didn't always know about it as much as it seems like we're more aware of it now. People are sharing that information with us in different ways. It's, it's of course a private conversation, but we do have to report that information by number to the state, not by person. But it's been under five in the past and that has gained, we have more people that are homeless. And there are lots of different ways for homelessness. You know, doubling up is considered homelessness where you move in with another family, that kind of thing. So there are a lot of different things that people might not have even shared with us. It just might have just happened, but we know more cases now. Model local dispute resolution is an updated version. So this is, this one will look new to you. And they also have forms that they are asking us. They developed some forms for us to use as well. So if we ever had, when we admit our homeless students, if there was ever a dispute about that process, then we would follow this certain resolution process. And this is completely an updated version, so it won't look like our ones of the past. And it is part of the McKinney-Bento. That's the reason we're adopting that one as well. Next up, students' absences and excuses. So this just goes, they're putting in some parameters and they updated some of the terminology from again, days to hours. So that's what you'll see in that one. And that brings us to the end. Those were a lot of policies. I don't know if I should apologize or be happy, like we cleaned it all up. But again, we receive these quarterly, quarterly and then we just make our way through the policy for those next months that occur after that time period.
Thank you, Mrs. Cheston.
No, thank you, I appreciate all the work that you do with that. You know, it's a recommendation by OSBA that your entire board policy be completely rewritten every five years and hopefully through those revisions. And going through that, most of our policies are older than 2012. So I know some of the more active ones are, have been recently updated, but there's a vast majority of that entire document.
I know that was something that Dr. Sabo was interested in doing. And some of them, I always, I have to apologize when I said, this might look familiar because we just changed it three months ago, but there's been new regulations. So sometimes that happens too.
Yeah, absolutely.
And then others don't garner much attention for a while. So we, we have tried to just stay in keeping with what they've recommended. So we've kept that, that passed. But it would be something Dr. Sabo would probably do as a special event for this summer or something to work our way through that.
Yay.
Yeah, it's important, it's important.
It is, it is.
Thank you.
All right. Next item is buildings and grounds.
You'll see that we have a proposal to use the facility by the Little Indians Football Team. Shea Stadium.
And then our finance committee report.
Well, you'll see at the beginning, the usual reports, we did add some number of pages that board docs will help us manage with our check register. We've provided some additional detail there, so we're looking forward to that as much as anyone. There is a new grant, I know Dr. Sabo is meeting with the staff members soon to set up the parameters for that new grant, Teaching Tolerance Educator Grant. We've already spoken to you about the business advisory council and just getting that expertise to kind of really collaborate on how best to implement that. You've already looked at the bid advertisement that I sent out to you and we are hopeful to have a final school resource officer contract to you for the board meeting. So, and that will be for the period, you know, that's been a work in progress. That will be for the period August 1st, 2017, and for two years. Takes quite a while to get that worked out and also work that through the county's process as well.
I'd just like to add a few details with regard to the SRO contract. Again, this is not for a specific named person. This is just simply for our agreement with Hamilton County Sheriff's Department. But in great transparency, the contract did expire in August. We realized that in September. And so I have been working diligently as well as with Ernie, with Lieutenant Smith to make this a true realization, to have a working document. A couple of things that we wanted to do was to have a school resource officer here when school was in session and not necessarily someone that was on our books, if you will, when school is not in session. So for example, spring break, winter break, summer, when there's not summer school, this person would not be on our payroll, if you will, to be here. So keeping that in mind, we agreed to a total of 213 days. And that would be five days the week prior to school. As you can imagine, the week prior to school, there are a number of things happening at this school with regard to reviewing plans, with regard to safety, with regard to students' PAM schedules in the building, things of that nature. There are generally 178 days of school in session with students. And of course, there are generally 30 days for summer school. So the contract that I shared with you was a past contract and we've worked to make it be based on a total of 213 days. So the one that I sent you as part of an exhibit, we're still working on correcting that. For example, the very last page says that it would need to be signed by a Norwood Law Director. Well, we, generally the sheriff department will report it through a city for that kind of thing and we will not be requesting Norwood Law Director to sign the document. Another thing was that it did not note or quantify a provision if we decided to ask for his support or were past 213 days. So we're working toward that revision. And of course, it will be for two years and it would start from August of this year and then two years forward. So we're well into the first year of the contract. Meanwhile, the sheriff department did, their unit did negotiate a contract of a 3% increase. And the present exhibit that I shared with you does represent that 3% increase.
Now, the current, the person would be here at the schools, the entire school day?
Yes, yes, it is approximately seven hours a day. And what I did understand, if they attend an evening event, is a minimum of overtime of three hours, so.
So we don't have to worry about getting a call and them having to go somewhere or something? And be gone out of the building then from now on?
He should be here.
Unless, well, unless he's.
There is some training that they are requiring.
Well, yeah, besides the training.
Or unless he's doing something else for us. I mean, there's times he leaves campus because there are things, times that he has to go for truancy and things like that.
There's some times that they've taken Clancy out to check her car on the expressway and we don't have anybody here.
Yeah.
So we don't have to worry about that anymore than.
We shouldn't, I can be clear about that.
Okay.
The workday is defined and in the contract, you'll notice that it's agreed upon with the district. And presently, the workday, I believe, is, begins at 7:15. And we talked about where the person reports at the beginning of the day and that they move to the elementaries to monitor arrival and drop-off times and then where they end the day. And we'll grow to be more clear about how we want the day used.
Do you have any other questions, comments?
So not directly related to anything here, but. So, not directly related to anything here, but since we're on the financial portion of the report, I noticed that we had in January, I guess, sent out for the senior banner pictures. So that was, that was a check that was done. Do we know when those are coming in?
I do not know that.
Because we already have a couple of sports that have already had their senior night.
I do not know when those are coming in. I know that this year, they were going to be made through Live Touch because it was alleged to have higher quality than what we had used in the past.
Right.
But I do not know when those are going to come in.
Yeah, so, so we've already missed senior night for a couple of sports, and I know the girls on the 10th have their senior night basketball game. I think the boys is coming up here very soon as well, and they're not here. So did we order them late, or did we, is Live Touch just missed the delivery date?
I don't know, I'll certainly ask about that, because we certainly want senior night to be very special for our students. It is, just because their families are there, and it's a complete group recognition.
Pictures of the athlete?
It is, it's a lovely, we do. It's a courtesy for our seniors. Generally, the athletic department does that.
I spent a fortune on mine.
Generally, the athletic department does that, but they did request for support to provide funds for that, so they're supporting that.
Yeah.
We want this year to be as amazing as every other year for our seniors. So I'll work on that, find out.
Okay.
Squirt a little bit out, it's not over.
Yeah, thanks. Alright, anything else?
That's a million-dollar question. I can tell you at 5:30.
I think we are adjourned.